Time is 6:00 PM. Start with the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Are there any alterations to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I would like to ask that we add item 8D discussion and possible action to set graduation dates. Please do have it.
Dates of the oral. Superintendent Superintendent would like to make an alteration to the agenda? Yes. Okay. Superintendent would like to make an alteration to the agenda, 8D, set graduation dates? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, hearing none, motion passes. Put it on the agenda, thank you. 8D. All right. Montville Marbles, best part of our program tonight. Mohegan Elementary, please.
I'd like to call up our social worker Brianna Strangjars. So Brianna joined our staff a couple of years ago as our social worker at Mohegan and since joining that day has made a tremendous impact on the lives of our students at Mohegan, not just at Mohegan but shows what helps out across the district. But why she's being recognized tonight is for researching, developing, and implementing our first ever social emotional night at Mohegan. A much needed program that recognizes the needs, the mental health needs, and raises the awareness for our students and families with mental health needs. So because of that, congratulations Brianna. We also have a second marble who wishes to remain anonymous, so I'll speak briefly about her. She is a community member, doesn't have any affiliation to Mohegan Elementary other than she lives in Oakdale. And she has anonymously donated over $1,500 to address student debt at Mohegan over the past three years, so I'd just like to put that in record and recognize her. So, thank you.
Hey, Murphy Elementary, please.
I would like to call up the fifth grade bus monitors that are present. Come on up guys. So when I was thinking about this month and who I wanted to nominate, it very quickly came to mind that I have had multiple staff members approach me about the maturity and the leadership that these four bus monitors have shown. There are others listed that I will call out their names, but I don't know if you all have kindergartners in your life or happen to have had them in your life, but I think our staff members present and any of the kindergarten teachers can tell you that it takes a lot of energy and leadership to be able to keep them in line. These four young women, oh, Dewis, come on. So Dewis as well. They are charged with getting our kindergartners, well, one, waiting with them and monitoring them in the hallway way at the end of the hall at Murphy School while we're waiting for the buses to be called. They may be seen engaging them in activities, games, but they're mostly keeping them safe and listening to when the buses get called. And then they have to get them all the way down the hallway and safely out to the front of the building onto the buses. And this year especially, I've had multiple staff members and I've seen them with my own eyes, just the really ability to do that with a, you know, a smile on their faces and keeping those kids safe and in line and safely to their buses. So for that, we want to recognize Dewis, Dewis Dia, Ryland, Jarieli, Nalia, and Mackenzie. They are all our Montville Marbles. And we also have Marley Linsky and Sanaya Mullings who aren't present, but we wanted to recognize them. This is Dewis. Sanaya's not here. Marley's not here.
Oakdale Elementary, please.
I'd like to call up the Murphys. Probably recognize their faces. Gary and Margie are part of the Montville community and particularly from the Oakdale section, they've been in Montville for a very long time. And their family went to school here and even came back and worked here. We have Robin Barquant who's not here, Tracy Callahan who's over there, who were dedicated paraprofessionals at Oakdale. And David Antensia was our beloved fifth grade teacher at Oakdale School. And beyond the walls of Oakdale School, the Murphys are active in giving back through the Oakdale Fire Department, through the Salvation Army canteen truck, and probably more that I don't know about. And I want to recognize them today with the Montville Marvel for their generosity and paying off student lunch debt at Oakdale School. And I told Margie, I know she doesn't do it, they don't do it for the recognition, but, you know, they really help a lot of students out at Oakdale School. And it's a small token of my appreciation for all the students they've helped over the years. So we really appreciate it.
Thank you too.
Yeah, she'd like to say a few words if that's okay.
Of course.
I would just like to say that there are many ways that you can help in your community. And this is one that Gary and I chose years ago, but anything that you can do to help your school or your community, even donating clothes or food or any little thing that you might choose will always be helpful. And it's good to be kind humans, so I hope the message passes. Thank you very much. This is the marble.
And we don't always do this, but tonight I also have a district Y marble that I would like to recognize. I'd like to ask Carol Dodson to join me if you would. Carol and I would like to recognize Leah and Darcy Van S. And Leah is here with us tonight. Leah and her sister, our Montville florist. Daughter, sorry, our Montville florist. And they came up with an idea that I didn't find out about until it was already in fruition really, to sell bouquets in the community. And they called them nourish and bloom bouquets because they were taking a portion of the profits of those bouquets and using those to pay off again student lunch debt. And they raised $600 through that nourish and bloom program, but they also then generously added another $400 to donate a total of $1,000 to help pay off student lunch debt. And I think that that is going to generate for us much more than $1,000 because they raised awareness in the community of a problem that I'm not sure our community was aware of. We certainly were. And we look often at student lunch debt and our principals do as well and struggle with how do we help students be able to afford their meals if they cannot because they are no longer free. And they were free for a couple of years, but they are not at this point and students have accumulated debt that they need help with. So this program not only contributed $1,000 that Carol has already applied to students' lunch debt, but it also raised community awareness and sort of incentivized us to recognize all of the people in the community that have been a part of that. And one of the goals that Leah expressed in a letter that she wrote to me that I think is very true is that we want, or they hoped, that our students would understand how much the community supports them and that their community is here for them and always has been. This is a great example and we just thank you so very much. And while I'm standing here, I would also like to just take a second to recognize the board because March is Board of Education Member Recognition Month. And our board is a tremendous board who goes above and beyond in so many ways. They give countless hours, they contribute ideas and thoughts, and have discussions both at meetings and outside of meetings with me. Lots of great ideas come from them. And most importantly, they are constantly dedicated to what is best for our students. And that's best for our students academically, best for our students in terms of their social and emotional learning, their mental health. And that dedication comes through in every conversation that I have with board members. I could not be happier to have worked with this Board of Education. I will miss them greatly. And the amazing thing about our board is there's significant turnover at elections, but the board philosophically doesn't change. A board with a true heart for what they're doing, always takes time to be proud and recognize people in our community, both staff and students, who warrant recognition, and makes hard decisions and communicates those hard decisions, but they know it's what's right. And you'll probably see an example of that tonight later on as we talk about the budget. But thank you all very much and you do have a little token of our appreciation that all Montville have.
Thank you very much. You're all welcome to stay if you'd like. No citizens comments regarding agenda items only? Citizens comments regarding, Gary, could you add anything?
Congratulations. Congratulations.
So third time, are there any citizens comments regarding agenda items only? Hey, thank you. All right, letters and communications. I do have two things, one I'll talk about when we start talking about, Laurie's gonna talk about staffing and class size at the high school, middle school, and some thoughts that Carol had. But I want also to say we had communication from, Laurie and I did, from the Montville Administrators Association. Effective immediately, the Montville Administrator Association has chosen to affiliate immediately with the Connecticut Federation of School Administrators, the CFSA, thus becoming the Montville Administrator Association bargaining agent. Signed by President Joe Masalupo and Treasurer Dave Gochny. So let the board know they decided to do this. Okay. Approval of the consent, count them.
Remove. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, hearing none, motion passes, thank you. Old business. Overview of Montville High School Career Pathways.
This was presented at the last E and E committee meeting, and I know the E and E committee members were really excited by what they heard. Rob is not gonna recreate that entire presentation because that was the purpose of the E and E meeting, but they did ask if he provided a brief overview to the board.
Yeah, I saw a handout by each one of your nameplates there to kind of talk about what the pathways are and what we offer. This is also on our website. It's in our course programs of studies, but there's also a separate link on our website directed right towards these pathways. You know, coming out of the pandemic, you know, we decided to look at that definition of deep learning. And one of the pieces of it was increase the student engagement. So one of the things, this stuff has been in existence, but we decided to kind of take our electives in conjunction with our requirements of graduation and create pathways that students can enroll in that would kind of align with their interests beyond high school. Currently, we have, I believe, nine pathways. You have a list of the, you have a packet of the pathways there and you have a description of each one of the pathways. Our students are enrolled, obviously, in the courses that require them for graduation, but in addition to that, they're enrolled in electives that kind of align with what they want to do beyond high school. So at eighth grade, our counselors meet with all, I'm sorry, when students are eighth grade, our counselors go up to tile and meet with them and introduce our current pathways to kind of spark some interest and kind of to think about what pathway they want to embark on when they're in high school. High school year or freshman year, counselors meet with all the freshman students. Students at that point, throughout the course of two different individual meetings, at the end of the second one, they choose a pathway based off of results of a kind of a career inventory or a survey that they put out for students that kind of help align their, their current interests with what they want to do beyond high school. And then they enter into a pathway at that point. Sophomore year, it's very similar process. They look a little bit deeper into the pathways because when you get into your junior and senior year, the options for electives really open up. So at that sophomore year, those meetings with the counselors are very pivotal to ensure that students are on, you know, a pathway that really encapsulates their interest level. There is also an opportunity at that time, if maybe their freshman year, from freshman year to sophomore years, their interest level have changed, to kind of jump onto a new pathway that kind of more aligns with their interests or that maybe they're changing, changing interests at that point there. The process kind of goes through or begins when they begin to explore this. We have a couple of advisory sessions embedded with this information, so students can also have another kind of sounding board, if you will, with their advisor to kind of explore these pathways or learn a little bit more about these pathways and help in hopes to try to make their decision. Because then you have final course registration where counselors meet with students to kind of solidify their course registrations. We're actually beginning to do that process. We're not there yet, in the next couple of weeks, we're gonna work on that process for next year with our students here. These pathways are really designed to increase the development of a particular set of skills to help really put them maybe, or advance them when they move on beyond our walls. So if they're gonna go to a culinary arts program, let's say maybe at Johnson and Wales, the skills that they'll acquire through our culinary arts pathway would put those students at a, at a really nice place or at an advantage when they move on to the next, next process there. So what's also another interesting thing is the ninth pathway on your sheet here talks about design your own pathway. Let's say we don't have necessarily something that's like locked into what they want to do or what they want to present. So if someone wanted to start their own business potentially, there's not necessarily, or maybe like their own, like a hairdressing company, there's not necessarily anything that's aligned to hairdressing, but they would take a lot of the business courses and the financing courses and maybe something from, you know, the human services pathways. So they'd be able to intertwine and develop and pull from pathways to create their own pathway as well. One last thing and then I'll be happy to field some questions. We also have a pathway kind of geared towards, you know, students to receive or advancement in college level courses. And we are actually very proud of our AP, ECE, and CCP courses and the amount of students we have taken those classes right now. So that is continually growing there, but we also put a lot of our students at a great advantage leaving this place, going into college with college credits. And we're very proud of the increase in those offerings as well. Now it's just really a snapshot, Kristen Rawlson, our Director of School Counseling, and Hattie Roebarge, our career in technical ed and fine arts department chair, really did an extensive and really nice presentation for the E and E committee.
Any questions?
These courses, they're taught, I see like some examples you would take is marketing, you're taking, I'm looking at the business, finance, and accounting. These courses are all taught by current.
By our current teachers here, yes. Yeah, so in our business department, we have two teachers in our business department. And as you know, there was the legislation passed about the personal finance course that must be offered through. In addition to that, we have the list of classes under the business career pathway that they are all certified to teach.
Can we bring in anyone from outside to kind of bring some real time studies to the courses?
We, we have a ton of opportunities. They were actually just on a field trip last, what was it, it's Monday, end of last week where they went to Three Rivers to like a career expo and they were able to explore a lot of these different, you know, career options down the road. We also try to bring them in through our College and Career Resource Center. We constantly have people in and out kind of promoting these programs.
Bill, say. Okay. We have a Montville marble?
Yeah.
Come on in.
Marley, come on in. My family. Ms. Terry, Marley was just a little bit delayed. So this is Marley Linsky. She is also one of our outstanding bus monitors who always is leading those kids and keeping them calm in the hallway. And I was saying that multiple staff members came to me and noted it, and I've seen it in action too. So great job, Marley. I know it takes a lot and you did a great job. So Ms. Terry's real important.
Thank you so much. Great job.
Okay, next item on the agenda, consideration and action to approve the proposed capital improvement projects. Superintendent?
What we typically do at this time is approve of the capital proposals that you want to send to the town for 2425. They have a longer term plan so that they, you know, know what's coming up, but what they'll specifically be looking at is the capital projects we're proposing be funded for 2425. And that's the last tab in your budget binder. We talked about these for a couple of meetings. They include the replacement of one large bus, the replacement of two small buses with one small bus that is wheelchair accessible, the Palmer roof replacement, the tile wireless project, the Montville's will track resurfacing, and the tile sump pump for the grease separator replacement. So those are the things that we would approve, send to the town to see if they want to fund them. But of course, we can answer any questions and alter this in any way, you know, put something out of here, bring something forward here that you're concerned about. So if you have any questions about these, Kathy and I will do our best to address any questions or thoughts.
Okay, does everybody in the board understand the urgency of the track? Okay.
The urgency of.
Urgency of getting the track.
Yes.
Resurfaced.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're kind of at that point where it's go, no-go. And I think if we have to pick, if we have to pick a capital that we should all stand behind, stand by, and all of them, of course, but that one is probably the most important one due to the situation of deterioration of the track itself. This is, this is something obviously a high priority. Any other comments, thoughts about the capital? It's small. It's actually a small request, believe it or not. I'm pretty, pretty pleased it's as small.
I think you should be noting too that there's $200,000 for White Board considers it continuing when this up in the noted topic. I don't know if they brought that to debt or not, or if that's just an operating class that they're gonna continue.
There are multiple ongoing leases that are showing the topic.
Yeah, I'm making the assumption the town.
Did through debt?
Yes, through debt. I don't know that for a fact.
That's how we presented it.
Do you feel it's important, Kathy, that we make sure we tell them?
No, because they made that commitment when they funded that project.
Okay, all right. All right. No further questions about it?
I'll move approval to capital improvement projects as stated.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, hearing none, thank you, board. I think it's a very modest capital improvement represented, thank you. Okay, next item, consideration and action to approve the superintendent's 2024-2025 budget for submission to the town by March 22nd, 2024. As you know, the town charter requires us to have it 100 days prior to the new fiscal year, which is July 1st, and that is March 22nd, Friday, superintendent.
So I will bring up this Excel spreadsheet where we were making adjustments to the budget at our last meeting, but before I do that, Will's asked me to address a question that was brought to him about class size at the secondary level. So I did prepare a couple of slides that I brought so that I can talk to the slides to have you understand. What we have done typically with class size is take a look at elementary and show you what we're doing because it's easy to understand. And the reason it's easy to understand is because elementary teachers are certified to teach multiple grade levels. So if I say I'm gonna reduce a section of grade two and add a section of grade four, that teacher can move from two to four because they've got the certificate to do that. And every kid is guaranteed a seat in an elementary school classroom. So we're able to say if I've got, you know, 80 kids and I want class sizes of 20, I need four sections and there'll be 20 in each section, and we can control within the building exactly how that works. So it's really easy for me to do this kind of math and show you that. And then say, of course, as, as we talked about last time, everything about our budget is our best estimate right now. If those numbers look different, where the addition sections are or the reduced sections are will change if it needs to be. And that could be honestly change across the whole K-12 district, not just across the elementary. But the reason that the secondary looks like this, and Will said, well, you know, can't we just see all those class sizes as well, is it's a lot more complicated. First, it's complicated by the fact that teachers have certificates and I can't say if I reduce a section here, that teacher can go teach this because they legally can't necessarily do that. And I also can't guarantee, and building these schedules, if you've done this, it's a, it's a long and tedious, difficult process, but just by saying I've got 100 kids and I'm gonna put five sections, that in no way guarantees there will be 20 students in every section. Because as we go to schedule students, there are a lot of pressures on that schedule. At the middle school, not as many as at the high school, and you'll see the difference in a minute, but are they in pre-algebra and not the seventh grade math? Are they in algebra one, not the eighth grade math? Are they taking Spanish one rather than the Spanish exploratory? Did they sign up for band or chorus or the music class? So all of those choices are what make scheduling at the secondary level difficult. And I'll try and show you and walk you through what that looks like. So for tile, yeah, sorry.
Do you have that in writing so I could walk down that or not?
These slides?
Yeah.
I didn't make a copy of these slides for you, but I certainly can share them with you. Sorry about that, I should have. These, I just threw them into my deck so that we could, could talk from there. But ask me if you can't read anything or you want me to explain anything more. But at tile, what we do first is we take a look at the core courses, where we want every student to make sure that they have an ELA class, a reading class, a math class, a social studies class, a science class. And if they've asked for Spanish one, which is something that they can elect to do in middle school or elect to take at the high school, that they have that as well. So we look at trying to get spots for every teacher and every student so that we can get distribution of students. It works pretty well in the core areas and we do that first where we can say, so at the top you see ELA, I've got my sections, and I say I need eight ELA sections for grade six. That gets me class sizes of 19 or 20 in grade six. Then I say, how many ELA sections do I need in grade seven? If I have 10, that'll get me class sizes of 20, about, and I'll show you the problem in a minute. So we put all of that in and our goal in setting this up as we did it is we have the teachers and staff. the teachers and staff, and we hope the town can afford class sizes that are average around 20. But we go to actually, whoops, sorry. We go to actually place those students. It doesn't fall out quite as nicely as it does in elementary, or actually control. We actually put 20 kids by name in a class. We load all their scheduling requests in, and then first we use a computer program, and then when that doesn't work, and you'll see that in a bit, we start to hand do it. And when we do that, we end up with, if this teacher has five sections, which is what our teachers have, and they all had 20 to have 100 students, um, in fact, the way it fell out, he's got a couple of sections of 25 and a section of 17, but in total, he has 105 students. So, I can't go class size by class size and say, "We want them all to be X." But I say, "On average, I want them to look like this." This gets a little more difficult when we start to add elective classes to it. Because the exploratory classes at tile, some meet every other day all year. That would be, you can't really run a band program if it just meets for a trimester with a third of your band kids. I need all the band kids in a band section that runs all year. Some of them meet for a third of the year every day. So, this is just two trimesters. Oh, and then there's, because there's just every other day, there's a day one and a day two. So, trimester day one, one day one, trimester one, day two, trimester two, day one, trimester two, day two, three, what didn't fit on the slide, and I didn't think you needed to see it, uh, because you've got the idea. Then we say, "How many students are there? How many sections do I need?" Using the same logic we did before. I love eight sections overall to accommodate my, um, sixth grade students, 10 sections for my seventh grade students, seven sections for my eighth grade. That gives me about 20. But some of these classes, we have to go larger because I don't have the same number of exploratory teachers as I do, um, the core area teachers. And some of the areas, we can accommodate some larger class sizes as well. At any rate, we put all this into the computer along with those core area schedules, and then we say, "Let me take a look at a teacher here." This is a tech ed teacher. He has five sections each trimester. There are different kids every trimester, they meet every day. And when this all loads out, we see a variation in his class sizes that some are 24, some are 16, but overall, he has that about 300 students. There's another tech ed teacher who might have more because this looks just a little below the 300, but it's going to be somewhere around the same. You know, we do our best to try and make them even because that's what teachers are unhappy, when, you know, one teacher has a significantly different load than another. We do that, then we look, we put this on the computer, and we say, "Okay, how'd we do? Did kids get what they want?" And this is where it starts to get tricky. The first load that, and Diane and I were doing this because we had change in, um, administration, so we were working with them because we were all kind of learning this together at that time. The first load we did, um, we had, students had 77% of the classes they needed. So, now we say, "That's a problem because I can't have you go to tile and not have math or not have science. I need to now think about, where do I need to open another section? Because what's the tension in this schedule that's causing students to not get what they need?" And we start to play with, "What if I made another this section? Or I closed that and added one here, or had to meet a different period?" And the first time we did that, it didn't get much better. We actually walked, you can see the dates on here. We walked away and said, "Okay, we've been doing this for like a week straight, and it's just not working. Let's sit down a week later, try again." We got to 82% of students had schedules without conflicts that we were able to meet their needs. Still not good enough. Every tile student needs every class. So, we keep doing that. But in that, it may be that we need to make another section of something in this period at this grade level because the schedule just won't work without it. Not because, you know, now that section, I might have a couple of sections that have 15 kids in them instead of 20 kids or 22 kids, but I can't get them scheduled without doing it that way. At the end, uh, we stopped doing it on the computer when we got to 96% and said, uh, we actually said to the admin team, "You got it. Find and schedule those kids and figure it out." But, this is, again, it took us a long time, and it's tedious, but this isn't the hard one. The high school's the place where it really, really gets difficult. And this is why you don't see a nice table with all their class sizes on it. So, first thing, I want to remind you of what Rob just talked about. We have a goal at our high school, and you have shared this goal as a board for all the time I've worked in Monville, because in every experience I've had with you, you have strove- striven, stride? I don't know, some word.
That is not tape, right? You're going to erase that?
You have worked really hard to have a comprehensive high school that offers students pathways and choices. And whether you saw that beautiful pathways chart and all of those things, but that's always been at home. And we're successful in that. So, we are measured at the state level, and these are part of our next-generation accountability in three areas that speak to what we're going to talk about. One is our students' preparation for career in college. That's measured by, do they take a college course in high school? Or, do they take a series of courses that leaves them poised to graduate with a skill in an area? So, they want to see students say, "I take, I don't take a random one course in tech ed, one course in art, one course in business." But I start to create that, what Rob, exactly what Rob's talking about, that pathway that leaves us having you meet your goal. You graduate not just with a plan, but you have the skills and knowledge to actually achieve that plan. Whether it's, "I'm going to go to college and I'm poised for success there," or, "I'm going to go to career, but I've built those skills." That means we need to offer a number of courses because we've thought, and, and I'm going to show you this year, scheduling for last year because as Rob said, we just started this new scheduling, so I don't have the data yet. Bear in mind, there's about 20 more students next year, but that shouldn't make a big difference. But I need to be able to place those, all of those students in classes that, they may not be perfect matches to their pathway, but they don't take them far astray. We support whatever that plan is that they've developed for themselves based upon their interests. The other commitment that we have made is to ensure that our students stay on track to graduation. And on track to graduation, as, at the end of your freshman year, means you've earned six credits. So, you have, most of our students take seven classes, and you have earned credit for at least six of those classes. In Monville, we do a really good job of that. At the end of our ninth grade year, 92.6% of our students are on track for graduation, 10% more than the state. The reason the state collects that data is that is a critical indicator to graduating on time from high school. Students who are on track at the end of their ninth grade year typically stay on track throughout high school. Students who are off track are at great risk, and there's a lot of data the state's collected, a lot of research behind this, for not graduating from high school in four years or potentially at all. You can see from our graduation rate, um, that we work really hard to make sure our students graduate in four years. That, I'm saying because this is important to the supports we put in place and the courses we offer at the high school. So, first, let's just look at the courses we offer. This is one of two pages. I figured you don't need to see all of them, but I just went in our course selection through the computer program that we use to set things up and clipped out the first page of the courses that we offer. So, our students are, right now, I think it's happening right now, working with their teachers, going online, and selecting, "Here's my pathway, here's my plan, what courses have I taken so far? Have my interests changed? Am I adjusting my pathway?" And then they're selecting their seven or eight, they can take a total of eight classes if they do a full load. Typically, a lot of students take seven, right? And what do you guys take in, seven?
Yeah, seven.
Same, seven, okay.
Six senior year.
Yeah. And they pick, who knows what? Every kid picks something different because it's just for them. It's going to be right for them. That's a commitment our board has made since I've been working in Monville. So, then we get all that data, and we say, "Okay, how many kids want what?" So, this goes to department chairs, and, um, again, this is last year's data because we don't have it right now. But the department head, working with the principal, says, "Okay, Algebra I, I have 70 requests. How many sections should I make there?" Algebra I is a freshman class. Um, that is a class that, for students who are not ready for algebra at tile, so you don't see our highest level math students as freshmen in Algebra I. You see them go into geometry because they took algebra in middle school. You see, we have 40 students in, I've put in yellow the courses that, our course numbering means something, all the fours are math. All the, the second digit is freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, one, two, three, or four. The third digit is the level. So, if that's highlighted in yellow, that's the level for students who we want to provide very significant supports for, particularly for our freshmen. If I want those freshmen to stay on track, earn their six credits, then what our experience has taught us is they need to be in small classes. So, we look at that Algebra I with 40 students and say, "Yeah, I could do two sections of 20." But those are students who are, um, for whatever reason, really struggling in math. And we give them supports in multiple ways. We give them support through class sizes, and we give them supports through the tutoring center with opportunities to go to see their tutor or push that tutor into the classroom. So, when we do the first run of the schedule, and this is not, this, do not take this away as this is done, because I'm going to show you a few more slides. This is my first run. So, given my parameters, I want those three sections, the numbers that edge in three, to be small. And I want to have, um, the ability to place every student in a class when I run that schedule. Let me see what I can do. We just put these, how many teachers, this FTE is full-time equivalent, so, um, for example, this is a half-credit course that only runs for half a year, so I have half a teacher here. Every teacher teaches five FTEs. If I have six math department teachers, they each teach five blocks, I say I have 30 periods available. So, let me just run these numbers and say, "Okay." My first blush of this, going through and saying, "I think this would be appropriate class sizes," I've accounted for 29 and a half of the teaching blocks that I have available for math. Then, however, I go to try and run the schedule. The things that are, the problems in my schedule are classes where there's only one section. So, I've got 24 honors algebra students. I say, "That's our highest level math student. I think we can put 24 students in that classroom. I think the teacher can meet their needs. There's not the same level of differentiation there is in those Level III classes." But with one section of that class, that means there's only one place out of the eight blocks that are, that courses are assigned that that class can meet. And it means when I go to run the schedule, those kids are probably going to not be able to fit all of the other things because this locks them into one period. I try it first. So, you see a lot of places where we only have one class meeting. Some of them we have to. Calculus, 16 students where, you know, we need to get them in there, or say to the student, "You need to make a choice. I'm really sorry, it's either band or calculus, but I can't fit them both in the schedule." And we do that all the time. But for the most part, particularly around like an Algebra I, Algebra II, geometry, we want you to have those base classes. That's not like a, you could catch your calculus in college if you choose something else in high school. This is the place you do this. So, we need to be able to get everyone in a class. So, we start to run that schedule. You saw the data when we ran the schedule at tile, where we were, when we did runs of the schedule, in the 70s, 80s, in our early runs. Uh, these are each year at the high school. At this point, they take it off the computer and they do everything else by hand because they just can't, it's so complicated, they can't get those students into schedules. But now is when they're saying, "Okay, the reason I can't get students a math class is because having it only meet here, it conflicts with the only time that honors biology meets, the only time that, um, the single section of Spanish at that level meets," or whatever it is. So, it conflicts with too many things, and too many students can't get math. I need to open two sections even though they're going to be something less than our ideal class size because I can't get the kids in the classes. So, this kind of shows you what, what they have available. This is not a, a true chart because, um, this year's data is not in, and I take it back to last year's schedule build mode because it's already built. But what you'd see then is, so, students in class 233, that's a, um, Spanish class, 16 of them are in a conflict with course 111. It's like a multiplication table, if you will. So, then they, the guidance director and counselors sit with all of those conflicts and say, "What am I going to do? Too many kids have a conflict with 111. I need to open another section. First, let me try to move it to a different period." And that's the, we just keep playing. "Let's put in a different period, run the schedule again. Open another section, run the schedule again." Finally, we say, "There are certain classes that are too small, we can't afford them." I can't, you know, when I, when I look at, "Am I going to get those math students in Level III a small class size? Am I going to run a classes that we closed this year? We closed AP Physics. We closed, um, Modern Europe. We closed the ECE, if you love to teach it." Saying, "I have to make some choices in this schedule. What can I, can I do to get as many students as possible accommodated, following along in that pathway, getting as many courses as I ask for as possible before I have this difficult meeting saying, you know, 'I know you've taken an instrument forever, and, you know, you're, you're an absolute band geek, and our band program is wonderful, but you've got a difficult decision to make.'" Because that only meets here, and this only meets there, and that's all they've got. So, you've got to choose one. And that's the, the meetings that counselors have, um, at the end of the summer, they come in early and start to call families and start to rebuild those schedules. But if, this is why I can't say to you, "Oh, here is our number of students, here's our class size," because there's just a lot more to it than that. We do the absolute best that we can. If we ever got to a place where I would say to you, "You know what? I think we could do with one less or half of a math teacher or, you know, whatever," we would do that and say, and I don't think, I don't see how it would happen this year because looking at last year's schedule, um, that wasn't a possibility last year. But if it were, then we'd say, "Okay, let's open another section at the elementary level because I think I can cut something here." The other problem with this, though, is there's a certification problem. So, I can't say, "I'm going to run one less math course and one less social studies course and one less English and one less science, and there I've got a teacher." Because those are five different people, and now they're all dropped down to .8. And I can't say to my teaching staff and keep them, "Hey, this next year I'm going to only pay you .8, but hang around because the year after I think I have a 1.0 position for you again." And the year after that, it might be, I don't know, .6. Like, we have a commitment to teachers, and we'll go with smaller class sizes if it means a difference between a .8 and a 1 position because the following year I'm going to need them. And teachers, you know, they'll, they'll go someplace else in that environment. If it's, I could go down to half-time, or I could go down an entire person, then obviously we'd make that decision. But, um, some of the areas in science, sometimes science, um, is the hardest. Every single subject is a separate certificate. So, your physics teacher, that's all they can teach. Your chemistry teacher, that's what they can teach. Bio teacher. So, I can't even within the science classes, you know, move those sections around the whole lot. Most of them have a second cert so that, because you know, if I want to be useful as a science teacher, I need to be able to teach more than one thing. But tho- those are con, some of the, um, constraints on building that schedule. Questions? Yeah?
Well, the only one that stood out to me was problem solving, one teacher, seven kids. So, does that teacher only teach that, or does that teacher teach other classes?
So, that teacher has four other classes. That one problem-solving class is our, our last ditch rescue for students who are really struggling in math who need that credit. So, those are, I don't know if you want to talk about that more around-
No, yeah, those are our kids that, like, like Laura said, that really struggle in math, and, you know, in order to graduate, you know, um, struggle to get their three credits of requirement of math to, to move on and get a diploma. So, we designed that course three years ago, I believe, to, to even further talk about the on-track of graduation. So, we tried to identify those kids early on and, I hope, they're not all, but we maybe put a lot of our freshmen in there to make sure they get that sixth, that sixth credit that first year to keep them on track. But it's just a, another, um-
Is it like tutoring?
No, it's, it's a math, it's a full credit of math they'll get out of the, um-
That they all share and they all meet at the one point in time. Is that what you're saying?
What do you mean?
Those seven individuals are all struggling with math. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, they're some of our, our most, I guess, neediest maybe math students in, in the building. That, that, and then it's going to be a prep to get them, because the one requirement in math that we need to graduate this school in particular is Algebra I. So, that would be those students who aren't ready for Algebra I, and we can put them And we can put them in Algebra I, they're probably not gonna be successful. And sophomore year, back in Algebra I, will keep kicking that can down the road. So this would be a, a great opportunity for that student to build the skills necessary to get to Algebra I. So they'll get the problem solving, or one credit in math, the problem solving, get the one we require, Algebra I, and then hopefully have enough to potentially get a staff, or a geometry, or whatever, you know. They have more options at that point. Especially if they were to do a freshman year, sophomore year, and now they have two more opportunities to get their third math credit.
Because what we don't want, if they're coming from the middle school and they're really, really struggling, and their, their teachers are saying they're not ready for Algebra I, what we don't want is to put them in Algebra I, put them in Algebra I again, put them in Algebra I again, because that's, that's not the best way to get their credit. First, we need to something solid, a solid foundation for that credit, and then we move forward.
I'm not clear. Is that teacher teaching other classes besides that one?
That's just one of her, the, the full-time equivalent, it has to be five, that's just one out of five.
One out of five. And what does that person teach the other five? Problem solving, or not?
No, just, different, different math.
Different, different math. But does it one, one, okay.
One, yeah.
So she teaches our, our AP Calc class?
Okay, okay.
Geometry, I think she has a geometry section as well.
So every teacher has five sections, so each of those things you saw there would be one of their assignments, with the exception of our department heads. That's all, that's the only exception I can think of. Department heads. The thing that I think as we talk about some of these things and looking at success, I'm sure you've heard this before, I'm sure you've read it in the paper before. But high schools, and have, there's been a lot, a lot done with this, have graduated students who don't have basic skills. So they go to college, and they end up in college taking remedial classes, not for credit. They're paying college tuition, they're incurring college debt, and they're not taking college classes. That's what we want to avoid. So we provide our students acceleration. They go to college with credits, and it saves on the semester of college debt. But we, the last thing we want is to send students to pay college prices for courses they should have taken in high school.
Is this problem solving class individualized?
It's, it's a one group in a room, which is heavily individualized.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's almost like, you know...
Is it individualized? So are they working on number sets? Maybe they just don't have that concept for multiplication?
Yeah, the particular teacher, she's seldomly outs, which is, which is great and remarkable. But the, one time I actually filled in for her with a sub shortage. She had individual assignments for every single kid in the class, which was pretty unique for, you know, especially for, you know, the differentiation for her in the entire class. So she, she works really hard to meet the students where they are and have them progress and grow where they are.
And we do that same process for every subject area. We just keep running the schedule and trying to get the students what they need. And that's our accelerated students, the, you know, jump on college, our struggling students, the, the skills and content they need to move forward, and all of our students, the pathway that helps them achieve their plan.
That's an excellent presentation. So I wanna share this with the board. So what's important about this, and I appreciate board members bringing this to my attention and Lori taking the time to do this. It's an excellent description of exactly what happens day to day in the school system that we don't know until we just hear this. It's a dynamic difference between elementary, middle school, and high school. It talks about students and staff, and our vision, and how it's impacted by schedules, et cetera. As a, as a team, guys, I think this is extremely valuable information for us to know. Not that we need to run down the street and share this with everybody, but this is information when we build a budget that we understand now, I understand now thoroughly, the importance of how this breakdown works at all levels in the school. So, thank you very much. That was, that was very well done, thank you. Any questions for the superintendent?
Only that, could you send that to the board?
Of course, thank you.
All right, we're on to new business.
Wait, we're not, wait, wait. We're not, sorry. We're not done.
Are we still on the budget?
Yeah.
Yes, that's my fault. Apologies.
So, where are we for last time? It's up there. And we need to think about where we wanna be. I added one thing. I called Shipman and talked to them about their policy service at your request. And Shipman's policy service, after the first year, is fourteen hundred dollars a year. She shared with me how it works. She gave me access to the site. Basically, when you pay for their policy service, you have a password and you can go into a site where they have a model policy for every policy that Shipman believes that a district should have a policy. And you can access that policy in Word. Pick it up, make it your own, edit it any way you want. And then they show marked up revisions to policies as needed whenever legislation changes, which is exactly what CAE does. Honestly, it's, in terms of user friendliness, a bit more user friendly because the CAE policies aren't Word, and I have to fucking work to get them to what I want them to be, whereas the Shipman ones are. The big difference between the Shipman policy service and the CAE policy service is the number of policies. CAE has a policy for absolutely everything. If those of you that worked on that policy revision know, we've opted to, it's like, we don't need all these policies. We picked up a lot. CAE has many fewer, and I think that's because they're, they're a legal firm representing us, and I think they know, if you have multiple policies and they start to, you know, you remember to change it here, but it was also mentioned there, and you haven't changed it, now you're in a liability kind of situation if you're not following that policy. So there are fewer policies. I think it might be smart if we, if we choose to switch to the Shipman policy service over time to look at some of ours that aren't in the CAE list and say, do we actually need this policy? Because I just looked up under instruction, I didn't count them. Our list under instruction is like this. Their list under instruction is like that. Oh my gosh, a lot of instruction policies that we don't, we are required to have. Some of them we may say, yes, nice to have it. It helps our admin team in a conversation with a parent to justify a decision. Then great, we wanna keep it, others maybe not. But in any rate, if you decided to take out what, and it's already taken out, so to keep, to accept my decision when I built the budget to remove the eighteen thousand two hundred for CAE membership, then you would need to potentially put in four thousand for the Shipman policy service. That is the cost the first year, and then fourteen hundred every year thereafter, unless the rates increase, but along those lines. So what we have in the budget, our proposal, coming from central office and the admin team, was that forty-five million, four hundred sixty-four thousand, six hundred and sixteen. We made a couple changes the last meeting, reducing MERS due to a reduction in the, we had a, a projected rate that came in lower. So that was reducing thirty-six thousand. We caught an error in the tutor calculation that we discussed last time. That increases it thirty-nine three. If we remove the CAE convention, we left that in the budget. We only took out the CAE membership. That would remove forty-five hundred. We can pay for the Shipman policy service basically with that. And then the other decision we made at the last meeting was, we'll take the risk of paying magnet school tuition, hoping that couple, or that funding from Staples will be in place, and we can afford that, knowing that we have the two percent if we need it to offset that with the work to come in after the budget we set. That's the spreadsheet as we were working on it. I don't know where you wanna go next. If you wanna play with changing some other things in here, we certainly can play with those.
So I wanna redeal what Carol sent to me before she went on vacation regarding this, our budget. I feel okay about our budget, would rather have more full-time pairs and keep CAE. But if I had to choose between CAE membership and pairs or coaches, I would choose the staff. I do think we should keep the convention in budget, as it is a responsibility of the board to do professional development. I also am interested to know exactly what the policy services from our attorneys look like, including anticipated added costs for, for same. CAE gives us a pretty comprehensive list when the dust settles from the legislative session, and I hope our attorneys can provide something similar. So that's input from Carol, she wanted me to share with you. So there's a couple ways to look at this. So, very important thing the superintendent said. We're leaving out the increased magnet tuition because the money's in our two percent account. That's no cost to the town. That money was budgeted years ago, over multiple years. That's no cost to the town. So if we have to go for that money, we have it available. So I think it's a reasonable chance to take and not say to the town, give us another three hundred K, because we'll pull up into two percent. And I think that shows real commitment by the board to, to pull it into two percent because it will take us down very long. I don't wanna steal superintendent's thunder. We're gonna talk about pair of educators in a second. Let's just stick with CAE. I think, particularly in light of what our budget is and our needs, that have been articulated very carefully by administration to us, I think this is kind of a no-brainer to leave CAE completely for a while. Our lawyers will provide us services. And again, if we were a board that was not functioning well, I would think different, have a different conversation with you guys. But I think we are a very solid team, perform at a high level. Administration's happy with us, we seem to be happy with ourselves. I think that says a lot. That's, that's real teamwork when you can say that about yourselves, so. Anybody have any comments about what the superintendent has up there before we get to the pair of educators?
Well, that doesn't reflect us being in CAE.
It does.
It does.
No, it just says convention and conference.
In the budget that it presents you? Do you, I, I made that.
Oh, okay.
So I don't think it's, it's like that.
It's already removed. So it's eighteen thousand dollars roughly ground numbers, and another forty-five hundred, twenty-five, which you can spend multiple, administration can spend multiple ways.
Well, no, I understand that part. I didn't, it wasn't seen, eighteen thousand, that's what I was saying.
Yeah.
So it's, it's caught at this moment. So you have to add that to the budget, you wanna put that in?
All right, we can wait and talk about this when she's all, superintendent, excuse me, is done. Any other comments about CAE before superintendent moves on?
The only other question that I received was around the cost of pairs, and it was twofold. Can't I give you an exact cost for what it would be to add X number of pairs? Because it would really be nice to have a hard number. We'd like to have a hard number in a lot of things in this budget, and unfortunately, we don't. And the second part of that was, I really think forty thousand is, is going to be what we need to do. So here's my logic. In trying to get some kind of a, you know, a number for you, of the twenty-two full-time pairs that we have right now, twenty-seven percent are on a double plan. Because the difference is, the difference in their costs is the interest. Everyone's clear on that, right? Four percent are on a single plan, sixty-eight percent are on a waiver. Our new hires, selected waiver. So the most recent people we've moved over have selected waiver. Those are our existing employees that became full-time. If I said, I'm gonna hire five full-time pairs, and let's just, and I'm just making this up because I don't have enough, I can't do twenty-seven percent of five and end up with a five. But if I said, one takes a double plan, one takes a single plan, and three take waivers, that would cost me around forty-three thousand dollars. So then, in this, this question that was asked of me, it's like, well, is five gonna solve your problem? And the answer, as you know, because I'm short nineteen part-time pairs right now, is no. It's not. So I was just playing with Will's, with the chart, and saying, well, what if we said, I want to get twelve full-time pairs? That's, that would reduce twenty-four part-time pairs. That's pretty significant. What would that cost? Again, I can't tell you what it would cost, but what if we increased the amount for pairs by another sixty thousand dollars? What would that do to the budget? And that would be, I don't know how many, but you know, I think it would be twelve, at, at least. Could be more. Could be less, I mean, if they all took failing plans, but you know, what's, what if they did? So I just threw that number in here so that you could see what it would do. If, that would be forty dot forty, we put another sixty towards full-time pairs. What's that gonna do to your percent increase? You're at four point five thirty-seven percent increase, and you can see that total budget number. This is the place you, you know, you need to think about... Then Will said to me when we were talking, and I threw that in there, okay, Lori, we have to decide, is this more important than tutors? Is it, do we cut the money for tutors and put it here instead? And I cannot tell them. I can't tell you, teachers are more and less important than pairs, are more and less important than tutors, or than monitors, or bus drivers. We need all of them to function, and that's, that's our issue. So the pair piece is, am I meeting IEPs? Or, and, and violating a contract, the terms of the contract, because they're working over hours to make up for the people that aren't there, or vice versa? So you're choosing the latter right now. You choose to, you know, you need, are legal obligations, but we're keeping people outside their contract. For tutors, it's how many, you know, what's my moral imperative to have students on track for graduation? And to provide that tier-two intervention that, in that multi-tiered system of support that the state expects us to have in place, the tutors are my first line of support for that. You know, the teachers do everything they have in the classroom, and I'll be pushing and pull out to tutors. At the, whereas talking at policy, because we talked about tutor centers, I thought the secondary, not the elementary, and why is that? We have Title I money in our elementary schools, and we use that Title I money to provide a lot of those same services for students at the elementary level. So it's not that we don't, you know, the need isn't there then, but we have different ways to do it. So, you know, it's hard, it would be very difficult for me to say, one of these is more important than the other, or let's cut one out. I would love to, whether you want to increase the money for pairs or not, I would love to send the budget to the town and see what they, what they said, what they will support, before we start to, to try and have that arm wrestle between needs. There are different needs for students, but they're both needs.
But all, but all those staff members, well, the children, the coaches are not working with you. Show them directly everything that?
Yeah, I wish you had been on the board last year when we showed the impact of those coaches on student success because one of the things the board saw in a workshop one time is if, say, I don't know, seventy percent of our students are successful, according to, they need the, the Level III on a smarter balance. And then we look at the number of students we have at that grade level, and we look at the bases that are the other twenty-two percent. Those are a lot of kids, and those are kids whose needs are not meeting. What we saw with our coaches was very significant changes in our students' academic success. And that's why the board decided, we only initially had math coaches, because that was the area where our scores were the lowest and our students were really struggling. When we saw what those math coaches did for our math scores and our student success, and presented that to the board, the board became champions for, we need to do the same thing.
And I see the math coaches. I understand, I understand the math coaches, but the ELA coaches, I mean, each elementary school has reading specialists.
They, the reading specialists do no curriculum work or coaching whatsoever. They have a whole load of intervention students. That's my tier-two, multi-tiered system, not the elementary level.
So we have those ELA coaches just to run them curriculum?
No, they're, they're, they're in the classrooms, they're working with teachers, they're modeling, they're co-teaching. They're, they are writing curriculum as well, but they're in classrooms. They're, they go between the schools, they have a schedule.
And I understand that, and I know that they're very important, but are they more important than the pairs or the two-year classroom? Why don't you talk about cutting?
Well, I'm not talking about cutting. I'm asking you to send the budget to the board, to the town, it's asking for what we need. But I will say this to you, and it's a hard thing when a board changes. You know how we talked about the state committing to the, the magnet tuition component? And then people change, and different people are elected, and then the commitment's gone? The board made a commitment to that, and they made that commitment very thoughtfully and thoroughly with a lot of presentations and a lot of, of questions and, and dialogue to just, in a year, remain on that commitment. It would be a significant step backwards, I think, for the, for the district, for people, and the specialty people are counting on, moving to a new, getting members of the entirely new math, uh, ELA program next year that are counting on support to do that.
Here's what I'm gonna respond to, to you, John, because I think, I, I run business models all the time. That's, that's how I work it. You know, we have customers. They're our children. They're my kids, they're kids, many kids in this room. They come in the front door, they go out the back door, they're educated, they're productive members of society. Simply said, that's the mission of education, right? They productive people out of... This business model we're presenting, this budget, we can advocate and defend to the nth degree. I normally would, would agree with you on some of this, but in this particular case, and I don't wanna get it tied up into the number and the percentage, but we represent, we are presenting a budget, thanks to this wonderful admin staff here, that is incredibly low and anywhere in state of Connecticut today. But that's for the town council to decide, and we're not gonna, we're not gonna worry about that. If they come back and they say they can't touch, and they can't do this for us, then we'll address your point about monitors, ELA coaches, and stuff like that. But I think this is a very clean, and you can stand tall on every single item on this budget in front of the town council if they wanna hear about it, or a finance committee. We can defend every piece of this all day long. And that's why I think it is important for the board to give to the town board that. Sorry, I got a little carried away, but I... This is important because I think we are, we are at a turning point in education in, in society. I'm gonna just quickly say this and then get back to the superintendent. We don't have a lot of room to make mistakes today. We just don't have a lot of room to make a mistake. And we're gonna present what we think is the best thing for the community and for the children in the future. And I think this is really, really good. Thank you, Lori.
If I could make a comment?
Yes, absolutely.
One of the things that I'm struck by, not only in our, here in our community and our school system, is we're, we're competing for professionals, you know? Unemployment is down very well, and it's, things in the future, we're going to be competing more and more for quality people to come to work. And my concern is, is that the longer that we delay to throw our hat in the ring to say, Montville wants you, the thinner that that pool's gonna get for us. And, you know, the pickings are just gonna get slimmer and slimmer. And I don't like the idea of putting ourselves in that position, kind of long-term, looking at how the economy's going, looking at how folks just cannot get people in. I just recently had a doctor cancel three appointments because he cannot get staff. I just recently had a doctor cancel three appointments because he cannot get staff in. Just can't get staff. So it's, it's across the board, it's not just school systems. It's across the board, and that's a concern for me that I think we should toss in there as well.
So what would happen if we didn't cut any of those classes in any of the schools? How much would that actually lead to?
If I put two more teachers in, is that what you're saying?
Well, if you didn't cut second grade, fourth grade, and Oakdale kindergarten at Mohegan. And added a fourth grade.
Yeah, I'm gonna say their elementary hires, they could probably come in about fifty thousand because they, you know, elementary school teachers generally, you can find very high-quality people that are starting.
But aren't those teachers already there?
No, they're, those, I'm not, I'm not terminating anyone.
Oh, I see.
So those are teachers that are retiring, that are saying, we could not replace. If we did replace them, if they were fifty thousand dollar salary with a single plan, and they'd be sixty-five thousand dollars or so. So we'd be saying, let's put a hundred and thirty thousand in. So if we, if we added that, that gets you to four, three, eight, three, five. And that's, you know, I'm just doing a quick number, but that gets you about right there.
Because, I mean, we talk about the math class at the high school, and you wonder why those children can struggle in math so much. So you have to go back to the elementary. And having a few smaller classes, maybe just for one year, especially second grade, can you, all of them? I mean, I can't, I can't say no, that one is more important than the other, but definitely K two is very important for, for children to develop their number sense at that time.
Some of those kids are foster kids that bounce from home to home to home. Or, you know, I tolerate people. The, the lack of consistency in schooling significantly affects the ability to absorb and retain information. And that changes as well, because school districts kind of teach differently, and they have different ways of delivering data. So I can tell you, lots of my kids struggled with that very significantly. So it's, I'm not sure it's the elementary school's deficit, or if it's, you know, the, the change in the revolving door that we have in our, in our community.
Oh, yeah, elementary schools are foundations.
Yeah, but if they're not here in our elementary school system, and they're coming in either through a foster home, or they've moved in here to get a job at the casino, they weren't here for our elementary school system, you know?
It's a piece of our problem at the secondary level, we talk about that, only twenty percent of our seniors started here. So we do, we, we get documentation of students being placed in foster homes every week.
And that's, David, yeah, no, I, I had a kid that every single day somebody was dropping him off.
So, and that's why, you know, it's not, if we could, you could say, well, just fix it in first grade, and then we'll be all set. Unfortunately, it doesn't work that way.
Not across the board, yeah.
We need to, to continue to work every second year the best that, that we can, and the best the town can afford. And that's the, that's the place we need to find, and what's the best we can do with the resources the town can afford to give us. But if you, you know, now we've put in additional pairs, two additional elementary teachers, and you can see where we're at, we're at four point eight three five.
Well, we have all, and three elementary principals here, why don't we ask them? Two elementary teachers, what do you think, thanks?
I mean, you're never gonna hear me say that small class sizes isn't, you know, vitally important. I can't, I can't weigh a pair versus a.
No, no, no. Strictly, Donna brought up the fact of adding two elementary teachers. What are your thoughts? We have all three of you here, what are your thoughts on?
I mean, I, I look, when you're looking at the Oakdale, and it's a possibility of, and I think we're not saying it's definitely a fourth grade and a second grade, that's just a possibility right now. I mean, I, I think we'd all agree that it depends year to year. Like, it can't, it's not just numbers either. It's, you know, I'm not gonna put it out there when I'm, what class I'm, there's a class at my building that, absolutely not do I wanna see that grade level cut. Because it just happens to be, there's a lot of need in that class, that particular group of kids. I, so you'd probably have to ask me that question every year.
Students are coming in every year with more and more needs. Certainly, actually, teachers are always better, great, and great. However, for that, we usually have to give something up, so it's, it's a fine balance, it really is. To get something, you usually have to give something, and clearly, everything that we have on our budget here, we need.
So you're happy with what superintendent presented originally? I'm not looking for yes or no, I'm trying to get an opinion here, and, because I'm fine adding two people to the, I'm fine adding, I just wanna, you guys are on the deck, look.
I mean, I think what Jill was saying is, is very true. It, it does come down to the wave of kids and what grade level they're in. So like, multiple years at Murphy School, there's been two fourth-grade sections. And next year, there may be three, depending on what happens. I know that that is a little bit of an exhale, because depending on what the year is, we, we've had multiple years where we might get hit with more move-ins throughout the year in one grade level. And, and it's like, so when we, when we do kind of like take the risk of going down a section, sometimes it does come back to bite us, but then other times it doesn't. So it's, you really just can't make the decision based off of, you know, an average number. But I think that this is, what's proposed is, is gonna be good if we can, you know, do it that way. And what, what I tell you I need today might be different two months from now. That's why I'm glad we're not saying, like, it is second grade right now, or it is fourth grade. We've had summers where, I've had summers where eight of nine kids from one grade level moved into an Oakdale alone, which is crazy, just crazy.
Mohegan's notorious for having many of its kindergarten roll leaves wait till August to enroll. So to say, you know, this is the number that we have of sections, and it's looking good at fifteen kids, and then we get ten kids, eleven, twelve kids enrolled in August, really throws those, those numbers off the plate in the game.
And I have to say to you, we have, in August, said we open another kindergarten section. And, you know, we've gone ahead and done that, we figure out how to pay for it, because it's gonna be some juggling around with the budget or something, but if that's what we need, we will do it. Because it does, it is very much, you know, these four students move? Wow, that class size of twenty-two looks very different than with those, that level of need in the role. It's, it's really hard to say. We are giving our, our best guess, our responsible budget that meets student needs, but as Jill said, we did not, and it was very clear to say, do I need to put the, the people on the chart someplace? But I don't know what grade levels they come from, what is second.
We're, we're getting ready to send the budget to the town. It really is seven months before the school year starts, where we actually have real numbers. So we're always trying to guess. I would be really comfortable keeping the two teachers in and going for the pairs, because both of those are going to help the children that we're tasked to take care of. And if the worst case comes, and they cut us, then we'll figure it out then. But right now, we're budgeting seven months out at the start of the school year. And again, things change in seven months over half a year.
Why did you take them out then? Why did you take them out, so we did put them in?
I'm trying to present to you the lowest possible budget I can that I think we can do without them. As I developed the budget and talked to our team, we said, because we were bringing, let me say this to you, if it was a normal year, I probably would've left them in. But if it's more important to me to be able to take those five, there are seven teachers in the grant, bring them in, and have a net increase of five, than to say, I need to increase seven. So that was our, like, how can we make this cliff not such a big cliff? So that was, that was our reasoning. If I wasn't going to pull anyone in for the grant, I probably would've replaced those two teachers.
And also, I have reservations that absorb those losses of teachers too, so we weren't laying people off.
Right, exactly, I do want to, sort of, block for certain, because then we're being unemployed and getting nothing. So that's, you know, that's not a good choice. But I think that, in connection with that, if we were upon to grant, I probably would've let the two in. It just seemed like a, a big ask.
Excellent question, Bonnie?
I, I just wanna say, since the superintendent, you know, is gone through these complex calculations and decided we can go without two teachers this year, you know, next year is another year. And I, I support your kind of decrease the budgetary trend. And we're just assuming you won't have that big of a change in the population.
And you all do, we'll need to find another hire of a teacher.
And we have to offset something else, whether it be for services, supplies, that would have to be a given take in the budget. Or maybe a special ed student may leave it for outplacement, and then we have that one. So I mean, it, it's a guide.
And if you think this is a reasonable ask, the four point eight three five, like I said, I'd probably would've left them in if I wasn't pulling the SSOs, the tutors, the, all the other teachers, the social worker out of the grant into the budget, but it was. And I was trying to get the most responsible budget I could to have.
But in August, it's all of a sudden we need to hire, say, two more teachers. I mean, how many people, how many teachers are applying for those positions? I mean, and then, then everybody's been taken, and then they're back in the place, or you're setting for somebody that, you know, couldn't get a job anywhere else.
The, the only requirement is the, you know, the group we have to exclude.
I have a tough question, and I hate to ask it, because it may, it took all of my tough questions.
Sure.
Okay.
Just be careful.
Okay, so, I understand you have two supervisors, is that true?
I do, I have an elementary and a secondary, and they're very busy.
Okay, can you tell me if they do it together? Your supervisors?
Yes, they support the schools, the administrators, and they run all the PPTs.
Okay, can you stop right there?
I sure can.
Okay. Is there any reason why we don't hire retired teachers to do our PPTs? Why do we have a full-time staff for that?
You need a certified person, oh, nine-two.
Correct.
To run some of those PPTs, most of the PPTs. Now, my elementary supervisor ran over five hundred PPTs last year. And when you look at, one PPT is at least an hour, and you're looking at the scheduling of that, then you're, you're working on the IEP, finalizing the IEP. If you have a, a complex student, you're spending a lot of time, you know, kind of guiding the family, guiding your staff. She runs data team meetings, she runs monthly staffing meetings for each program. She runs special ed meetings in the schools. They attend my meetings with the speech paths, the psychologists, the mental health, the OTP, the OTPT, the mental health. They're very, they're very busy.
How many PPTs do you?
And they guide the special ed teachers. They make sure that the interventions are put in place prior to referring to special ed, and then they make sure that the IEP is being followed.
All right, so how many PPTs do you think they do a week? Just on average.
Well, I can tell you, I filled in yesterday for, for one of them, and I did six of them. And, yeah, yeah, so on, like I said, they, the secondary, they both did close, like, Theresa, the, the primary level did over five hundred last year. And secondary was right behind her. And then, you know, and I'm helping fill in the gaps too. So they're, they're, they're tapped out.
I have to say, a retired, if we do retired people, we need multiple people. The consistency of the services and programming, and, you know, the, at the meetings, and the relationship with parents are really important, so they wouldn't be positions I would consider.
No, but the school districts do do it that way, right?
But they're also.
I think they do more, like, if it was more than Theresa and Amanda could do, then we'd look to bring a retired person in to pick up, you know, some additional, but to not do them at all would be pretty significant.
They're both, you know, specialize in special ed, so they know the law. They know evaluations, the recommended needs for evaluations when there's an area of concern with a student.
Now, there's something of, does a five oh four come out of that?
Five oh four is.
Tell me about that, do the principals do our five oh fours?
The principals, no, the guidance at the secondary do five oh fours. And the, and the psychologists at the elementaries run the five oh fours, the elementary level. I run all the other district five oh fours.
Is it common for principals to do a five oh four? Yes, I'm not throwing you, I just, I don't know, I'm just trying to inform myself.
Yeah, yeah, it, it could be, some, some districts have a different model, and they have the principals running some of those meetings. However, those are in larger districts where they have an, an assistant principal as well. Like when I worked in Corrington, they, they had principals and assistant principals, so they ran the PPTs. And there was an assistant director and a, and a director. So each district's different. Yeah.
All good information, first, and if I had a decision, thanks, Bonnie.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Hold on, hold on, it's just a question.
No.
It's a great question.
It's a great question, that's what we're here for.
To some of those PPTs, if DCF is invited, there's a surrogate parent that's assigned to the child. The attorney is invited to attend, the parents are invited to attend all. Us's guardians are invited to attend. So the table is then populated by a huge component of kind of legal-brained people that are asking and take the meeting kind of, or contrive to take the meeting in a different direction. So, you know, I can get to the average for a day, it's probably.
You can ask a question here, please, I'm fine with that, just don't mind me.
Any other comments about this, 'cause I have a couple thoughts. But I wanna hear some, any other comments? Okay, Bonnie made an interesting point, I tend to agree with her on this. It was established by administration that we could do without two elementary teachers, but I would a hundred percent support the funding, extra funding for additional pairs, and removal and adding of, removal of Cade Conference, and adding of Shipman Policy Service. I think the superintendent makes a good point, she sat with her staff to put together as lean a possible and responsible and productive, efficient budget possible. So, back to Bonnie, I think they agreed, two elementary teachers, we could do without. I would, I would say, we, I would suggest that we might wanna reconsider that as a team here. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I think we should keep them.
Tim?
Either way, I don't know.
We're, we're kinda taking a voice vote here. So I mean, that's not, it's any A or an A to.
I mean, we can always leave them in and let them, and be something to cut.
So I'm gonna tell you how I feel about that. I don't want that town council having anything to play with. That's all I'm gonna say. I've been there, I've done it, I don't wanna, I don't wanna have, that to have anything to play with. So, yes or no?
No.
Tina?
No, I don't think we should keep them.
I say we take them up. Bob?
Take them up.
I'd like to keep them.
Keep them. Bonnie?
You want to, you want to read the.
They're out, they're out, they're out, that's a count number, sorry. Okay, so let's get the, let's remove, excuse me, two elementary teachers. Now, what else would the board like to talk about? Yeah, let's, let's do that, let's do a voice vote around the table with the pairs, and start this side.
Keep them.
Keep them, sixty thousand?
Are we doing five or twelve?
Well, the sixty would get, I mean, so, I can't tell you a number, but I think it would give us twelve for sure, unless they all live families, which is.
It would be a bucket of money that would allow us.
I think that's, we should go with what we really truly need.
Okay, Bonnie? Keep them. Lisa? Bob?
Keep them.
Keep them?
Keep them.
Keep them. There you go, administrators, pairs. There you go. Okay. Cade, remove the conference. Start this side. Donna?
Yes.
Tim?
Yeah, remove the conference.
Remove the conference.
I'll abstain.
Bring them.
Remove.
I have to say, remove, I don't know enough to say anything other than that.
Uh, shipment services?
I do believe in some sort of, some professional training for us, so. I'm sure you'll figure something out, Will.
So what happens if you don't have shipment, if you change attorneys?
If we change attorneys, it's likely we'd still work within shipment. I've changed attorneys within shipment before, because it's a large. I've changed attorneys within shipment before, because it's a large, a large firm, so. But I would think that, I mean, I know one of my superintendent friends uses a different attorney, and he does his policies through that attorney.
Because I know the council changes all the time, so I was just wondering.
We've been with shipment a long time. Okay. It's a big enough group that if you're dissatisfied with law, you can ask for it.
We add 4,000 for shipment. Donna?
Yes.
Tim, yes?
Yes.
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 Can I ask him a question? Yes, but do you have to bid for your legal services? Every year, do you have to bid?
No, we've never done them forever, there are, there are services. But there's a, there's a value to that history, actually, very significant.
Okay.
And the relationship.
Okay.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Yes.
Erica? I think we've covered everything. Does the board have anything else they want to suggest to the superintendent before she says this and stone sends it off?
Well, I hope that this is the council's process, because I have seen the area, other areas who system, they're, but they are quite large, quite large.
I agree with you, but again, we need to stay out of that swim lane.
Yeah, I know.
Completely, because they'll be held accountable for any change in, for money that they don't give us. They'll be held accountable, we just present. Okay. Are we good?
Do you want to just make a motion to send the 45 million, 527,416 dollar budget to the town representing a 4.537 percentage?
So, move?
Seven.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all is a favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any extension? Thank you very much, board, very responsible.
Oh, the dates are then? Public hearings have been set for the last Wednesday and Thursday of April. I didn't bring my publicist's dates.
Yes.
Five and 26?
Twenty-five, 26, or 24, 25, we set it for council meeting on Monday.
Public hearings are either Wednesday and Thursday, the last week in April.
Twenty-four and 25.
Twenty-four, 25, okay.
The town is the first day, and the board is the second day.
Or the 25th?
Yep.
Say those dates again.
Yep, 24th and 25th. Town budget 24th. Board head budget 25th.
Which we all like to try to vote to, if we can.
Able.
Right.
Do we know what time it will be set?
Six, I think it's six or seven.
Probably set.
Pretty sure it's set.
Council chambers.
It's at the auditorium, high school auditorium.
Oh, it's at the high school auditorium?
Yeah, yes, that's where it's held. They approved it at council meeting on Monday night.
We'll put the invites out to you, the meeting invites out to you tomorrow.
Yep. For those of you who haven't been to one, these meetings usually last anywhere between one and four minutes.
I thought you were going to say hours.
No, I'm, it's, I don't even like to say that, but that's the truth, between one and four minutes.
Serious though?
Six.
Seriously.
It's pretty sad.
You'll, you'll see.
Does that include, I pledge allegiance to the flag?
Yes.
Yes, yes, that is a pledge, it's, yes. Because I might want it. That was my one. All right. Okay, and we're on to new business. I'm going to go ahead and read this, pursuant to Connecticut Journal Statute, section 10-215, and the Montville Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises, sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
So, move, second.
This is an annual motion stating we comply with the mandatory nutrition standards and that we will not offer for sale during the school day foods that don't meet those standards.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all is a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extension? Thank you. Next, the Montville Board of Education moves to allow the sale of students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards and beverages not listed in section 10-221Q of the Connecticut Journal Statutes provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of this regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. And, quote, "event" is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice meeting or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, inner scholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, player rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. Regular school day, in quotes, is a period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location, again in quotes, means that where the event is being held it must be the same place as the food and beverage sales.
So, move, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all is a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Hearing none, thank you. All right, HC, consideration and action to set Teacher Appreciation Week, May 6th through May 10th. Superintendent?
Um, that's, once you set that week, the wheels go in motion for our PTOs and parent, other parent groups, our administrative team, our young and I, start to work on the ways that we will recognize our teachers and help them realize how important we think they are. So, what those plans will be, we'll keep you posted. And we, in our district, recognize all staff, not just teachers on that day.
Good.
I'll make the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, hearing none, motion passed, thank you. Discussion and possible selection of graduation dates. Action to set graduation dates. Go, so move. Second. Superintendent?
So, this is something that we often do in April, but we got wind this last week that the Montville Carnival had set dates for the Montville Carnival that are in conflict with graduation. And I really can't imagine running graduation and the carnival at Fair Oaks at the same time, because there's a tremendous need for parking for both. Our graduation people park at Fair Oaks, and the carnival people fill the, the high school lot. Uh, we talked about, could the carnival folks park at Tile and walk down? But we, I, I think that that's beyond the police capacity, because they'd have the carnival, the Tile parking lot, and the graduation, and all of the traffic of all of them, and keeping people out of this lot, plus the noise of the carnival while we're trying to have a, you know, formal ceremony going on in our football field right next to it. So, my suggestion is that the school year, the, the last student day is June 17th, with the snow days that we've had, we have two graduations that, or one graduation that we run here and a promotion ceremony, I mean, that we run here, Tile and the high school. So, my suggestion is we have the Tile promotion here on June 13th. Those eighth graders would still go back to school on the 14th and 17th, and that we have the high school graduation here on the 17th, so that we're not in conflict with the carnival in any way, except for cleanup. I did contact the mayor first to see if there's any way we could move the carnival. He said they've already signed contracts. In the future, we'll do the, you know, just make clear there's a building use process before we sign any contracts, we should make sure you have the building use form, like, we're clear to use the lots and all. But if we do the 13th and the 17th, we'll avoid the carnival. What I emailed to the mayor to ask is if we could have town support in cleaning our grounds, because particularly the fireworks blow this way, and there's a lot of cleanup that needs to happen before we'd be ready for graduation on Monday. But if we did that, the, the other graduation is Palmer's, and I would have that on the 14th. So, we would do Tile promotion the 13th, Palmer graduation the 14th. The Tile students would be expected to go to school, because they have to go 180 days. The Palmer students would not, because seniors can graduate on a date that's set prior to 180th day. The Montville high school students would go, their whole year of school's over on the 17th.
Is the carnival a 15th or the 22nd?
Carnival is 14, 15, 16. So, that's the, the rub that we're in. And if we do that, and we have some assistance with the cleanup, I think we can accommodate every day. No, I, I should say, we're of course assuming when I say the last days for students that there's, the rest of our year is uninterrupted. I don't know that for positive, but, you know, hoping that's the case. If it's, if it were interrupted, we could still keep those 14th and 17th dates based upon a change in statute some years ago.
Any questions for a superintendent on this? Okay. All is a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, hearing none? Tile will be June 13th, high school will be June 17th, Palmer will be June 14th, thank you.
And the only little tiny wrinkle, but I don't think it's a big one, is if it's raining, Palmer's is here, but the crowd is so small that I don't see that as a problem at all. But we would need, we couldn't have something else booked for the auditorium on the 14th, because it would be reserved for the Palmer graduation if it rains. It did last year.
Last year was yours here?
Last year. Uh, information items? Son?
Sure.
Oh.
No, information items. We haven't gotten any.
Sorry.
You're cold.
Is there an update on the tennis court?
They were, they were on them today, Will saw.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, Adam can tell us.
Oh, um, yes, we, we were on them, we're very grateful to have them. Girls, the girls' team is actually very big this year. They're bigger than us, which is usually the other way around, usually we have more boys. But we're both definitely enjoying them. They're a little slippery, but so far we haven't had any injuries, and we're hoping that we can stay safe, you know, hurt anything like crazy. But I'm very glad to have those.
Why are these numbers, Adam, why are they slipping?
The, I'm, I don't know for sure.
But they're not finished.
Yeah, they're not.
They're just carrying.
A finer, a finer layer of paint that is, should be going on.
Oh, so you're planning before that?
I assume before next year.
Well, so, it's going to be like the tennis courts at Simpson Lane. You have to have four nights in a row of 50 and above to put the epoxy and paint on. Am I correct about that?
Well, and now we're.
Correct.
And now we're delaying till, because they're using for their season, and then we'll do it.
Right, but the point is, that's why it's not quite done yet, but they can.
But it's not unsafe, right, Adam? Is it unsafe?
I wouldn't say it's unsafe.
All right. Policy.
Policy. Uh, we met today, I was appointed the policy committee chair. We went over eight policies that were to be revised or had or added. Uh, so Lori and Diane went over the policies and any changes that they are making recommendations. So, once they make those changes, then we will bring them to the board.
Thank you. Education evaluation?
No meetings.
Thank you. Communication committee?
No meeting.
Thank you. Montville Education Foundation?
Uh, they are opening the next grant cycle. Grants will be due the end of April, April 30th. They're giving grants of up to $10,000 again. They are setting the next fundraiser as a trivia night on June 8th. They will be at the Polish Club, 5 to 8. I think it would be really cool if the board wanted to put together a team. They're doing teams of four. They'll have dinner, dessert, and trivia. And Kevin Lethrope is leading the trivia, so it should be a really nice night. That's the first time they've done that. The golf, golf tournament is underway for August, so they're working hard to raise money and give it away at the same time.
Are they going to do the pickleball thing?
The pickleball is on hold at this point.
Okay.
I think it would be nice if a board member could attend the golf tournament, just to say thank you. I don't know if the money that anybody's, or, Emmya. I have just a suggestion, to have somebody from the board, just, just to thank all the golfers.
Usually the chairman would do that.
I think he would shoot them. On the same, you are.
Wow.
If you have a Zumba tournament, I'll show up to that.
Along the lines, I mean, certainly could also recognize them as a marble. That would probably be awesome, too.
All right, moving on. Lauren?
Okay. My meeting last Friday, and people have asked me, what does Learn do? So, actually, we came out with a catalog of services, I think they're going to pass down that way, so that you can literally peruse what Learn does. I mean, we are the educational resources, you know, regional educational service center. Primarily, we do special education, and, uh, yeah. But we also run magnet schools. And we run one at the Three Rivers College, and it's the middle, the Three Rivers Middle College. And then we also have the marine science, and we have the friendship school, and we have arms, and SFS. So, we run a number of them. And we do have Montville students attending Learn magnet schools. Number of them. But this is just to give you a little overview exactly what Learn has the ability to do. So.
Well, thank you, Bob.
Thank you, yes, appreciate that. Cave and NSBA, Carol is not here, do you want to?
I was in the last set of meetings with them.
All right, we'll hear about it next month. All right, Montville Youth Service Bureau?
They met last Thursday. Their penny drive kicked off in January. They're planning to do a special community project that hasn't been announced yet. That's up and coming. Uh, there's a blood drive there on the 8th of April. And one of the things that was noted with their youth action council, they did an athlete mental health survey. And of the respondents, 79% feel pressured to succeed. 46 feel comfortable talking to a coach about mental health. 60% feel comfortable talking to teammates about mental health. 4% think vaping is okay despite being illegal. 38% of the student athletes using energy drinks to push through. It's insane. Thank you. And their next meeting is equal 11. Thank you.
Alexa?
Emmy's just finished the meeting, finished out the winter sports season by earning second runner-up at states, and they competed at New England Regionals this past weekend. So, that's, it was a great achievement. The warmer March weather, or at least for a little bit, was exciting for athletes who, as of Saturday, started practicing for their spring sports. And then led by Ms. Wiseman, the volleyball team has been bringing their expertise up to Tile to teach middle schoolers the basics of volleyball every Thursday in March. And beyond developing the skills, the girls are really developing bonds with the high school players, which will be really important when they move to play at that level. The National Art Honor Society, the FCCLA Culinary Club, International Club, and Montville Arts Council are coming together to host an Italian festival for the community. Students have researched the culture of Italy and are creating a menu of Italian foods, as well as some Italian-inspired art to share with everybody on April 4th as an after-school event. Tile is excited to announce their spring drama production, Mary Poppins, which is running this Wednesday and Thursday, the 21st and 22nd. And then on Valentine's Day, the student council attended their annual bingo event at the Montville Senior Center. And it's become a tradition of students helping the staff set up bingo, run the bingo, clean up, and then they pass out cards to the seniors. And it's a really great opportunity for the different generations to come together and talk, have some common interests. And they're really excited about an upcoming visit April 5th before the school year ends. Tile also started a new initiative that recognizes students for perfect behavior. And if they receive zero disciplinary referrals, they're given a certificate, a letter home, and are entered into drawings to win a prize. On the same note of student success, last Friday, Tile held a student of the trimester breakfast. Uh, the councils organized it, and in total, 111 students were recognized for exceptional effort during trimester two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alan?
We started off the month of March with our pep rally, and unfortunately, the seniors took home the win. This isn't the last pep rally, however, as we do have the spring rally, spring pep rally coming up in May. Uh, the drama group held their performance at Adam's family. Uh, it was the first week of March, and.
It was the first week of March, and I chatted with Ms. Walsh, who's the director, and we agreed it was a really great show. I really enjoyed it. I hope to be able to go see it. And like Alexa said, the spring sports started up last Saturday, and again, I'm very appreciative of having a place to practice with the tennis courts. No games yet. The high school students are preparing for Read Across America, and April 5th is the day they're going to be going into the elementary school classrooms. I visited the like informational meeting, the first one they had, and it was in the cafeteria, and there were a lot of kids in that room. There was a ton of people. I also know that, I'm pretty sure that all of the spots are full. So it's definitely been very popular. It was very popular last year as well. I talked to some friends who are doing it. They're very excited, so I hope all those elementary schoolers enjoy that.
Thank you. Press please.
Just to tie into Read Across America Day at Oakdale, Read Across America Day is the beginning of March, but we've worked with Ted Richmond at the high school to move it to right before April break, so it's really nice. And those high school kids, a lot of them try to get back to their own elementary school and, you know, go into classrooms of teachers they had. It's really nice. At Oakdale, what we did was, we partnered with St. Thomas More, which I think we forget is, you know, another group of kids in the area, and they came to read to our kids that day too because we were waiting for the high school kids to come in April. And it was really neat, and if you don't know much about St. Thomas More, they recruit from all over the world now. There were kids there from Vietnam, from South America, all over, and they were talking to them about their culture. And I suggested, they said they wanted to come back to Oakdale. I suggested they kind of go around to all the elementary schools because Oakdale's not the most diverse school, but I think some of the kids at Mohegan and Murphy, some of the kids at Oakdale too would really benefit from seeing kids just like them that, you know, are successful and they come in and they wear their uniforms. It was really wonderful. And then my PTO was very generous to kind of dovetail that with the author visit, and the author was awesome. And one of my teachers said it was one of the best assemblies we've had in years, which sometimes it's hard to find authors that will engage with a kindergarten student and a fifth grade student. So he was wonderful, and I'll share the information with, you know, the two of you because it was really great.
We also started the Read to Ride program at three elementary schools where, if you're familiar with that, students are encouraged to read, get a ticket for each book they finish, and then they come in and award K1 and K2 a bike, one for each grade after reading long in three, four, and five, get a gift card and fix for reading. So the kids really get excited, love the reading for that. Also at Mohegan, we recently had a couple of grade-level states of field trips. One went to see the play Dot, Dot, Dot at the Garde, and our third graders went David Quaid for Project Delta.
I just wanted to mention that we had a really successful, and it may sound something simple, but we had a really successful movie night. It was just a family movie night. The PTO sponsored it. It was free. They even provided free snacks. And I was overwhelmed with the number of families that came as a family to sit on the floor of the, you know, cafeteria and watch a movie that you know a majority of them had already seen on Netflix, but it was just, it just goes to show that, you know, people are really craving that time together as a family, but in our schools and with their school community. So it was really tremendous, and it was nice to see all the families there together, so.
Nice. Wednesday, on the 27th, Rob and I are lucky enough to have Chris Herron, who is gonna do a presentation at Maha High in the morning, and then come to Tile after. If you don't know Chris Herron, he was recent in the newspaper, he visited Stowington. His story is pretty remarkable. He was a tremendous basketball standout. He got drafted by the Boston Celtics, but he had addiction issues his whole life, and those issues kind of overtook him. He's since started a whole foundation. He travels the country speaking. I've seen him speak twice, and he's just, he's unbelievable. You can see him on YouTube or ESPN, a special that they did on him. We partnered with Montville Youth Service to get that into Montville, and I think our kids are gonna be really fortunate to hear his message. And it's just him in a microphone, and he will have all the kids locked in for that. So I think it's just a really good opportunity for our community to be exposed to that. If anyone wants to come, I think Rob's is at, is it at 8:30, Rob?
Eight forty-five on Wednesday.
And Tile, we're going at 10:30 for all the seventh and eighth graders, so anyone's invited, if you want to come and come see that, it's gonna be a really unique opportunity.
Greg stole my thunder. That's what I was gonna pause. That's what I tried to do.
What was the date on that?
Next Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Everybody quiet down at Palmer?
We're good.
Excellent. Excellent. All right. Director of Special Services, Paul.
Okay, so with spring, I have turned my focus on preparing for summer school, ESY, this year. As in the past, we are running a program three days a week for four weeks. It is four and a half hours long. I find that the longer days, as opposed to, it used to be four days, shorter days, and I find that there's more instruction getting done with the longer days, so that's, that's really been beneficial. ESY will consist of a program for the preschool, two special needs programs, one at the elementary level and one at the secondary level, and then a secondary social skills group, which is more of the higher functioning high school, some of the eighth graders, and they go out into the community, they work on cooking activities in-house, and then they do some out community activities. Also running a transition program, summer school, those students will continue working in their interns and continue working on their independent skills. Referrals that come for ESY are vetted from, by my supervisors, before they come to me, and then I'll start building the staff for that. Tomorrow, we have our preschool screening, utilizing my OTPT speech and special ed administrators, Jill, myself. We have quite a, quite a pool of students to screen. It's a little bit over 40, I think. We have so many that it's spilling over into Thursday, one session for Thursday, so we're doing five sessions, eight kids per session. So that's pretty exciting that we'll have a nice pool of, hopefully a nice pool of typical peers to choose from as well because, you know, we have at times struggled to find appropriate typical peers for the integrated preschool. So, that's it. That's it.
Citizens superintendent?
Yes, so this, or last month, I'm sorry, last week, we had a Safe School Climate Committee meeting. And just to remind you, as part of our bullying policy, we're required to have a Safe School Climate Committee that looks at bullying and how we respond to complaints about bullying. The overarching goal is that the work we do within this plan will create a positive school climate where students feel safe emotionally, socially, intellectually, and physically. So as the district coordinator, I met with the Safe School Climate Specialists at all six of our schools. And we talked about how we respond, how we identify bullying, how we respond to bullying, and what steps we could take to make improvement measures. So I wanted to share with you some of the trends that we have been seeing regarding some complaints about bullying that have come in, and some of it involved mean behavior. However, when you dig deeper, you see that sometimes it's a friendship gone awry or something like that. And I bring that up because another trend that we found when we met was the, I don't wanna say the overuse of the word bullying, but the misidentification of some actions as bullying because there is a definition to which the actions fall into. You know, some comments or language are misinterpreted, there are some threats causing fear, and again, friendships that change whether it's through, as an example, after-school activities or sports activities and then in the school and just, you know, sometimes when you're with somebody all day long, every day, seven days a week, it gets to be a lot. We talked about strategies to mitigate. We have advisory lessons that focus on relationships, monthly respect lessons at the elementary, utilizing our social worker and school psychologists to get into the classrooms, and certainly we have done our share of safety plans to ensure everybody feels safe. And then other proactive measures so that we never get to this point. We've really worked on teaching kindness and empathy, really building up our ruler and SEL programs. Again, advisory lessons, health lessons, talking about healthy relationships because this also includes teen dating violence, which we're required to monitor, and then counseling groups for students in all levels that struggle to make friendships. We'll meet again before the end of the year just to continue to make recommendations and support the schools so that everybody feels safe in school and we behave appropriately. That's it.
Thank you, superintendent.
So a couple of things. One, I've been holding back, Will's asked me this earlier, and I said it was part of my report, so I couldn't tell him. We, Kathy had with Aljukhansky a meeting with the State Department around the Tile Group Project, and when I say State Department, I mean school construction. But Kathy feels that within the next week or two, we should be ready to go out to bid, so that would be the next step, an important step in getting that off the ground. Really excited to have that underway. We also did have a conversation, I got an email from someone who is administering the HVAC grants, and in responding to that email, we asked for a quick conversation. They, in that conversation, led us to believe that we should hear within the next couple weeks, and that was half a week ago. Friday, oh, Friday, okay. Anyway. By the next board meeting, I think we should know the status of the HVAC grants, which will be really exciting as well because then we can figure out how we wanna move forward with those. The, as Paula mentioned, the PK screen, one thing, just an example of how we work together as a district is as we're working on the kindergarten waiver, our teachers that are going to be going through the waiver applications and screening those students will actually be observing the kindergarten screen, or the PK screening because the process will be very similar, and that's been in place for a long time, so we thought we could learn from that. We developed a rubric that we'll use, but we'll adapt that and some of the activities that the students will be engaged in based upon their observations of the PK screening, and then that K waiver screening will go on. That will help us to, your question about where the class sizes might be, you know, where the teachers might be reduced, because that will help us understand our kindergarten numbers a lot better. So anxious to have that underway. And the last thing I have is just the beginnings of information about summer sports at the high school. So in the past, and I was just educated on this by Tim Dellegar, AD, we have had summer athletes work, they are not allowed to be coached by their coach, but they can potentially meet with a volunteer parent or a graduate off-site and, you know, work on strength and conditioning and practicing, but it's not something that's part of our school program. That being said, there are athletes, it feels like a school program because they gather as members of our teams, so some of the fallout from that still becomes our problems. You know, Rob or Tim will still get calls from parents or students about whatever happened in that, though it's nothing to do with us. The CIEDC has been working for quite a while on making changes to guidance around the allowing coaches, certified coaches, CPR-trained, et cetera, to work with their athletes over the summer. And they have, ECC is working on it as well. What we believe will be the case is from mid-June through mid-August, they would be, coaches would be allowed to work with their athletes two days a week, up to two hours a time. So we will, as we get more information about that, put in place our plans for what that would look like. I am adamant that no coach feels obligated to do that. It's their summer, and if they wanna take vacation, I want them to be able to do that. And also, no athlete is penalized for not participating in whatever happens in the summer because they may have a job, they may be away as well. If coaches choose to do this, then participation for both the coach and the students would be voluntary. There's no additional pay involved for the coaches, and the students can choose to join or not join. We talked, when we were talking about maybe doing one sanction practice per week in the district, there might be, I talked to Tim, a lot of times there are games, but they're not, you know, it's not like a true football game in gear and tackle and all, but there may be some competitions. If there are, you will have nothing to do with transportation, those will not be district sanctioned events, the events that occur on campus would. So Kathy's just looking into the insurer, but we're pretty sure that our liability insurance would cover us for that. And we're working with Willie to see if we can flex some custodial hours. The cleaning of those areas has to take place anyway because the summer camp meets here and they use the gym anyway, so they would, we would just flex some hours instead of cleaning up right after summer camp, they clean up after the athletes are done as well. So I think that will be, listening to Tim explain what had been going on, that'll be actually a very nice change. And that's all I have.
Okay. Citizens comments? Any citizens comments? No citizens comments? Okay, thank you very much. So first of all, let me thank the board very much for a thoughtful discussion this evening regarding the school budget. I am very pleased with it, and I hope you all are too. Administration's worked very diligently to put this together. I think we had a really good conversation tonight. I think we exhausted just about every venue possible, but you never know, that could change in the future. I enjoyed the Adams Family, by the way. I thought it was a really good performance. I thoroughly enjoyed it. I look forward to seeing the tennis courts getting complete. I'm glad that the kids can get out there and play on right now. So that's all I have for board chair remarks. Future agenda items. Nobody wants to talk about anything at the next meeting? Not yet. Okay, fair enough. Motion to adjourn?
Come on.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
See you tomorrow.